Yes, sir.
May 1st, 2017's meeting of Anaronda County Council is now back in session. Folks, I just want to let you know that we always do the pledge of allegiance and also prayer. We've already done that in the first part of this. This is just a continuance of what has been happening since nine o'clock this morning. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is John Grasso on behalf of myself and staff and, of course, the entire council, but most of all, the behalf of the people of Anaronda County. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and hope entrusted you find it informative. And with that being said, Madam Secretary, please read your ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office Complex on Reva Road.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda? We're going to start off with first, it looks like Ms. Jennifer Corbin. Okay, come on down. She's from the Crisis Response Director of Anaronda County Medical Mental Health Agency will provide an update about the crisis response team efforts. Thanks for coming out and seeing us today, Ms. Corbin.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to give you guys a brief update as part of County Exec Shoes' effort to combat the heroin epidemic in our county. I wanted to update the council and county residents on the recent actions that crisis response, along with the Anaronda County Mental Health Agency, is doing to address this issue. Part of it is in conjunction with the Anaronda County Police Department. We are actually a nonprofit who works in conjunction with county police on police radio to follow up on all of the overdoses. As of January 1st, we are now following up on every single overdose that happens in our county and in Annapolis City. We have a special-trained CIT officer, which is a crisis intervention-trained officer, paired with a licensed clinician. If we don't meet them at the hospital right after the overdose, we are going to their house or to wherever they are located to offer as many resources as we can to get them linked to treatment. The key here is to get to them quickly and to offer the services right then and there. Another piece that we are also working on is along with fire on the safe stations. Someone who is in need of treatment can come at any time to a fire station 24 hours a day. And when they arrive and are assessed, no matter whether they have to go to the ER for withdrawal or if they're okay, they contact us and we come directly either to the ER or to the fire station and link them immediately with resources of some sort depending on what their need is. And the last part that we're taking part in is educating and prevention. And I know that Nancy Schrum has spoke about that, but I am part of the Not My Child panel as well as Wes Adams, myself, and Mandy Larkins have been in middle schools trying to work on the prevention of no new users. So we're addressing the overdoses with the users who are in need of treatment along with prevention model of getting out there and trying to educate our young people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming down, too.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to offer an open mic to anybody that wants to come down and chime in on anything that is not on the printed agenda. You get to come down here and fill these little seats up over here.
We've got a list.
We have a couple.
I've got people. Okay, I've got, let's see, Ms. Erin Coates and it looks like Kathy Fleishman and anybody else that wants to come down and fill the seats.
Hello, I'm here to-
One second, ma'am.
Follow you.
Okay, so we understand everybody that it's going to be two minutes. Okay, you're going to state your name and address, and when you hear the buzzer go off, please let it go, okay?
Thank you.
All right, so I guess you're Ms. Coates?
I am.
You look like a Ms. Coates. How are you doing this evening?
I'm very good. How are you?
Thanks for coming out and seeing us. Go ahead.
The reason I'm here is my maiden name is Rautson. My family lives in a property directly abutting the proposed Chesapeake Terrace rubble landfill. I'm here representing my family as well as my community that has continually opposed this project. My grandmother has spoken before its commission in the past, but she passed away last May. My father is a current owner of the property and he is not able to be here today because of his disability. We have noticed in our lifetimes the community has changed significantly in Odenton. It has become more suburban, become a lot more gentrified, and while we'd love to see it stay farms and fields, we understand that's probably not how things are going to happen when you're this close to this many jobs. We have had to adjust to increasing traffic on the roads. The WBNA Trail, which is actually my driveway, there's a lot of hiker-biker traffic on there. So it's been an adjustment, but Mr. Coak, the owner, developer of the Two Rivers Community, has proven himself to be a good neighbor. He's improved the WBNA Trail. It's been positive even though we lost a small piece of our property to it. Even before he began development, we didn't have issues with noise, trespassing, et cetera. It was properly secured, and now we have many more tax-paying citizens in that development next door. But on the other side, Mr. Haley has made it clear he has an intention of being a good neighbor if the property is not secure. There's a lot of illegal activity, including gunshots that I hear from my home, ATV and dirt bike riding. A person was murdered back there. So the property is not secure. A lot of things could have been different, maybe it was better monitored. We are opposing the proposed landfill for several reasons. First, we're concerned about the destruction of the wetlands and wildlife activity in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Secondly, and very personally, the water supply that serves our home is about 100 feet from Mr. Haley's property, and it will very surely be contaminated by those activities. There's three homes on Breakers Road from a spring house. Many homes around the Millersville landfill had their wells contaminated. The Cunningham rubble landfill, which was located behind the Watch Apple Shopping Center, accepted fly ash asbestos, and we don't want that in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. Your point is well taken, I can tell you that much, least particularly by me.
Thank you.
Next person, let's see, we have Ms. Kathy, it looks like Fleishman.
I'm part of that, sir.
You're going to pass it up?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll start over here. How about we start right here with you, ma'am, and you go with your two minutes, your name and address, and you can sit right there, just slide the mic over. Do your thing. We're all ears.
My name is Catherine Rogers. I live at 7968 Union Jack Court. I'm here today on behalf of myself and my husband and our dog, Lilo, that was attacked and killed on April 12, 2016, I mean, 2017. I am here today to try and get justice for my dog along with all the neighbors that now feel unsafe that this dog has just been returned. This family has just been devastated, and our family is no longer whole. We adopted Lilo from a high-kill shelter in Alabama about a month before we got married, and we were very excited to have our family grow by four furry feet. My aunt was also attacked by the dog that killed our little baby. We're trying very hard to get through this tragedy together, but as I walk out of my house every morning to stand in front of 23-second graces, I fear to walk to my car knowing that this dog is still in my neighborhood and knowing that there are children every day in my neighborhood. This dog is given a second chance while my family is now broken. I would like to see that everything is a case-by-case basis and not just one bite or one attack because my dog is now gone and my home no longer feels like a home because I'm afraid to leave my house. And I'm afraid to have children.
Let me just, I know I'm out of order here just for a second. I just got to get a grab over here of this. A dog attacked your dog, and then I hear something about a child? Just it's your animal, your child, your dog, right?
Yeah.
I know where you're going with this, okay? Because I had that happen to me, and it wasn't a good feeling. My heart is with you 100% on this one. I guess the bottom line is to figure out what exactly is going on. I guess we can contact Animal Control and kind of get a little better story of what's going on, but my heart's with you because I know how it is to have a chum-chum and then have someone rip that animal. God, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Mr. Gressons, just for the record, I am working with the police chief on some legislation to help.
Okay.
We had a, I'm not speaking on additional details, but we had a pit bull essentially come out unprovoked and went after her dog, and I think they were away, had a dog sitter, which was her aunt, and completely muled the dog and killed it. Police department kept the dog, took the dog, kept the dog, was only allowed to keep him for about a week. Right now, the county law doesn't really allow, the police department do a whole lot more, and they put some restrictions on the dog when it went back into the community. It's got to wear a muzzle and stuff like that, but, you know, those rules are only going to be enforced as well as someone's looking at it. So obviously, if this was a person, we wouldn't allow that person back on the street within a week, and unfortunately, we let this dangerous dog on the street.
Yeah, I got a situation when I had two pitfalls running. This was in Baltimore City, we're on them freely, and we all had a little female cat that we all took care of, and needless to say, what happened? And it was like everybody was a mess, a complete mess. So I got you, and I feel you, and I think your councilman is going to do the right thing and see what we can do about it. Okay, next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Fink. My name is Jessica Ewing, and I live at 3455 Brookhaven Road, also in Chesterfield in the same community where Katie and her family live. This is the second dog attack we've had since November. Our first dog attack, coincidentally, by a pit bull, we're not picking on a breed, those are just facts, and the 14-year-old girl required 14 stitches. The dog was still returned, and that family subsequently, after living in our community for 20 years, left. I'm very concerned for members of our community and the way that regulations are currently written. A potentially dangerous animal, and there are classifications that go into it, but when they're potentially dangerous, even if they've killed a dog, nothing, they cannot put the dog down, they cannot retain the dog. Animal Control cannot. And what we're asking the council to do is to take a look at the regulations that Animal Control currently has so that no one else in my neighborhood or any neighborhood in Anaronda County has to experience what this family is experiencing and the one that we already lost. No one could prevent Lilo or this little girl from being bit, but the damage of that dog coming back into a cluster development like ours, where a community of 1,835 homes packed pretty tightly, and my concern is that these dogs come back to our community and people leave because they're terrified to walk out their front door, and rightly so, especially when that kind of damage has been done completely unprovoked. So I just, I ask that you take action and protect the people in communities while you're looking at also protecting dogs. Oh, one last thing. I included a packet for each of the councilmen with all of the details, including the order, so that you can take a look at the issues, and there's also photos in there. The family doesn't want to see them, so they have not seen them yet, just to kind of give you a better idea of what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, Jessica, I'm sure if I read this, it'd tell me exactly what the photos are, but the photo one, that was the girl's leg that was bitten?
That was the 14-year-old girl, yes, sir.
Which was not this instance, but this instance from-
In November.
The second dog was the dog. The second picture is the dog. Third picture-
Second picture is Lilo, yes. Third picture is Lilo after death.
And then the fourth is a picture of the ant?
The ant who was attacked by the dog.
There you go. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh, my. Has this dog just got out freely? Is that what happened?
Came out the front door, yes, sir, and charged at the ant from 100 feet away. She actually lifted the dog up, the small dog, Lilo, up over her head, and so subsequently she was attacked in the process.
Oh, God.
Do you want to go ahead and walk out? Can you give us a second? They want to exit the room while they go over the affidavit.
Okay, ma'am.
My name is Sandra Feen, and I live at 596 Whitney Road, Savarna Park. I am Katie's mother, and Liz is my sister, the one who was walking the dog. And she was walking the dog and had just come out of the house with Lilo on a leash. She had walked down the sidewalk and heard growling, and the dog came from around the corner and charged at her and Lilo. At this point, she was able to pick Lilo up over her head, and the dog grabbed one of Lilo's legs and pulled him out of her hands. The dog continued to maul the other dog. Finally, some people that were looking at the house next door came out to help her, and several people, there was about seven people there, and they all tried to get the dog off of Lilo, and they were unable to do that. Finally, a neighbor from across the street came off and somehow wrangled the dog off of Lilo. They took Lilo to the vet hospital where they pronounced her dead upon arrival. The dog was returned to the owners because it's considered a one-bite rule, and the dog has never had an incident before. I do not consider this a one-bite rule. This dog maimed my sister and horrifically attacked and killed Lilo. The laws have to change. These cases have to be looked at individually. We feel like we lost a member of our family, and the whole thing was just, I only saw the aftermath and blood all over the sidewalk. It looked like a murder scene. I mean, it's the most horrific thing I have ever seen. I just want to have the laws changed so no other family has to experience what we did. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Want to take it away, ma'am? Name and address, please.
My name is Terri Petucci. I'm at 2681 Dragging Clutch Way in Odenton, Maryland. And I'm here along with several members of the Two Rivers Community in Odenton to lend our support to, against the landfill that the very first speaker talked about here. I did not come prepared to talk, but I wanted to make sure that the council was aware that Two Rivers is very much with the Forks community on this, and we are, for all the reasons the first speaker so well put, against this landfill because of those reasons. It is not the same community that it was originally proposed for, and we do not want this happening in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, Councilman Peruski is going to do his best to, you know, to do what he can do, and of course, he always knows I got, he's got my support where he's at on that situation. It's convincing the rest of the council to go along with it, and we'll do the best we can for the people. Okay, is there any other in the council member who'd like to place on the agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April 17, 2017.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Grasso at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Peruca, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 17, 2017?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, motion carries. The minutes of April 17, 2017 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 1917, resolution confirming the appointment of an Anaronda County resident to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee. Resolution number 2017, resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of an outside attorney to assist the county council in certain matters relating to legislation regarding the licensing of certain towing companies performing towing at the request of the police department.
Thank you. May I motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolutions number 1917 and 2017 out of order?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1917.
I'm going to call the role on the motion first.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution Numbers 1917 and 2017 out of order is passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1917.
Resolution 1917, resolution confirming the appointment of an Anaronda County resident to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
All right, and we have the administration. Mr. Marsick, how are you doing today?
Great, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marsick and the county executive's office. Resolution 1917 submits EJAS Yunas, resident of District 2, to Spending Affordability Committee. Mr. Yunas is a certified public accountant. He's licensed in Delaware, Maryland, and Virginia. He's currently a senior consultant with Price Warehouse Coopers in Virginia, assisting the federal government on financial improvements and audit readiness. We would ask for your support of this resolution.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Your district, are you cool with this guy?
Yep, I'm good.
Great, thanks. Okay, with that being said, we're going to open the public hearing on 1917. Anybody want to chime in? Please feel free. Two minutes. Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 1917. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1917.
Resolution Number 1917, resolution confirming the appointment of an Anaronda County resident to serve on the Spending Affordability Committee.
Again, any discussion? Seeing no movement, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Resolution Number 1917.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1917 is adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2017.
Resolution Number 2017, resolution concerning a determination by the county council to engage the services of an outside attorney to assist the county council in certain matters relating to legislation regarding the licensing of certain towing companies performing towing at the request of the police department.
Okay, I'm also going to add myself as a co-sponsor along with everybody else. All right, Mr. Walker, you want to-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, last year, we had a situation where we, a couple of us got together and requested an opinion after we received an opinion from the Office of Law. In that situation, the individual did the work pro bono, and this time, I'd like to engage them and pay them, and so in that situation, I think it requires this resolution from the council, from the majority of the council. So I'd ask your support for this resolution as we look to see what someone from the outside has to say regarding the Office of Law's opinion as it relates to Bill 3417.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink?
The sponsors, why not, why not just get our council to write an opinion? I know we've obviously gotten an opinion from her verbally. Why not just have her write it down and give us another opinion?
So my understanding is that she's, Ms. Tate, and I don't speak for you, but, I mean, her role isn't, her role isn't defined to be able to do that. I mean, her role is a legislative bill drafter, not someone who is there to draft and pick draft opinions for us.
Well, her role is what the, I believe her role is what the county council asks, right? Is that one of the roles, is that one of the positions in law? There's a couple that are in the charter. Is county attorney? I mean, I'm sorry, is our? Ms. Tate? No, it's not. So it's essentially anything that the council would ask. I mean, right now, we have you, you know, drafting legislation, and I know that keeps you busy, I'm not suggesting it doesn't, but if we were to come to you and say, hey, Ms. Tate, we'd like you to give us a legal opinion on a certain bill, is that something you could do?
I think the issue is more that the official opinion that relates to the legal sufficiency of a bill as well as the recommendation if the bill leaves the council, goes to the county executive, that official opinion comes from the law office. That's one of the reasons why the law office does also provide legal advice to the council on certain pieces of legislation. I think that what Councilman Walker is asking for is to have someone review an opinion that was provided without the council's request, and that's a slight nuance to it. So, and the council is able, under their provisions to hire an outside counsel, they are able to hire a counsel to provide them with opinions on legislation and drafting legislation.
No, I certainly understand we're allowed to do it, and it just seems like this issue, you know, we certainly, and in the last council, there were some pretty big things that we probably should have hired outside counsel for, and we didn't, which would have been a lot more time-consuming than this, but this just seems like it's a small issue, and I know you certainly have an opinion already, and just writing it in paper versus going out and hiring an attorney, I just don't understand why we can't do that in-house. I mean, I get, we want another opinion, and I get, you know, we've spoken many times that there may or there may not be a conflict in Office of Law giving us our advice to begin with. Why we wouldn't just keep it in-house and hire the attorney here, and, you know, at the end of the day, it gives you exactly what you want, it gives you a second opinion, and I believe it's an opinion that you're looking for, and it just saves all the money. I just don't understand why we can't go that route. But I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peruca?
If I could, it seems to me that it's not inappropriate to do this, though. Being an attorney and knowing a lot of attorneys, the idea that you would go to a certain person or a certain person with certain expertise or something that you're confident that he has, he or she has that expertise, is not an unusual thing, and I don't see this as an inappropriate thing. I intend to support this. So it's not, I'm not disagreeing that you could ask any attorney to give the opinion, but it's not unreasonable that you would find, that you would seek out some attorney that you knew had special expertise in a certain matter to do that, and I think it's probably appropriate that we retain that ability to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Folks in general, what this is pretty much about is it's the challenge of powers between the executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch, and of course, the legislative branch has a problem with the executive branch on something that we believe strongly about. So Ms. Tate, even though she does a great job in giving us advice and keeps herself out of personal opinions, and because we know her every day, we just feel a little bit, Councilman Walker and myself, that the administration has given their opinion on what they think is right or wrong, and of course, Ms. Tate has given her opinion, what she thinks is right or wrong, and we just feel comfortable enough to get somebody that doesn't have anything to do, is similar to an arbitrator, to say, okay, this is you guys, this is you guys, and this is my opinion. So we're just trying to secure up the nail in the coffin, if you want to call it that, to make sure that we are on point with what we're trying to do, and that's what Councilman Walker and the rest of us are trying to do, to get an unbiased opinion, and that's where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask one more question. One, I don't disagree with Mr. Peruca, I mean, I certainly think it's reasonable to do this, but when the opinion comes back and it differs with the Office of Law, which I'm confident it will, and that's fine, then what? Because the Office of Law, who represents the county, is saying, you know, position A, that doesn't change, correct?
Yes.
So nothing changes at the end of the day with this opinion, other than it allows us to move forward possibly with the bill, which they're currently saying goes against the charter. We voted in. Office of Law presumably is not going to change their position, so the position of the county is it's against the law or charter, then what? Ms. Tate?
The attorney's job is to give advice. The client's job is to listen to the advice and make their own decision. You are the client of the Office of Law, but you are also taking outside advice. You each have your legislative prerogative to vote on the bill, just as if the county executive chooses to abide by the advice from the county attorney. His prerogative is to veto the bill and send it back to the council. What the council decides to do based on the advice and the events that transpire as a result is up to the council, seven of you. So, I mean, that's, you can choose to listen to, there will be different opinions.
Can we just play that out, Ms. Tate? So council passes the bill, goes to the executive, presumably he vetoes it because it's, it goes against the charter according to his Office of Law, comes back to the council, the council overrides his veto. So now, now the bill's overridden, but Office of Law says it goes against the charter. Does it become law?
Yes, it does, and I think that what's important to remember here, without going into the substance of it, is that the opinion that's provided by the Office of Law is also legal advice to the council, just as an outside opinion might be.
Sure.
It's just that the Office of Law and their official role in advising the county executive, that's the difference there. But the advice that the council, as individual legislators, as you each choose to go by, at the end of the day, it's still, it's, I don't want to call it competing legal advice, but that's essentially what you're doing, and you're making a decision, and it is law. And I think if you- And I think if you see some of the county attorneys in the, in the audience will say, once it's law, then they have an obligation as your attorney to defend it. So of course, when they put forth an opinion, they don't necessarily want to have to put forth, they don't want you to pass a law that they're going to have to defend if they don't agree with it. Whether or not that means one is legal versus not being legal, that's, that's for other people to decide and not me.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so we're going to open up a public hearing on 2017, if anybody wants to chime in. And seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 2017. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2017.
Resolution 2017. Resolution Concerning a Determination by the County Council to Engage the Services of an Outside Attorney to Assist the County Council in Certain Matters Relating to Legislation Regarding to Licensing of Certain Towing Companies Performing Towing at the Request of the Police Department.
Any discussion among the colleagues? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2017.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
One in the negative, six in the affirmative. Resolution Number 2017 is adopted.
All right. Yeah, we'll bring it on down here. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2417.
Bill Number 2417. An Ordinance Concerning Erosion and Sediment Control, Grading Permits, Agricultural Buildings.
All right, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office, with me at the table, Dan Kane from Inspection and Permits, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. As we discussed at the work session, this legislation is response to agricultural community's request to eliminate the grading permit required for structures that don't require building permits in the building code. Currently, the county can approve a standard grading plan for disturbance equal to 5,000 square feet or less, and the Soil Conservation District can approve a plan for projects exceeding an acre of disturbance. Grading permit is required between 5,000 square feet and an acre. Soil Conservation Districts and Inspection and Permits have agreed to a process to cover that gap without the need for a grading permit and still meet Maryland Department of Environment's requirements, and that is the legislation before you. We'll be offering amendment at the appropriate time. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Anybody for questions? Mr. Walker, you want to chime in on this one here? Are you good?
No, no, sir, nothing to say at this point.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right, don't see any. We're going to have to open up the public hearing on 2417, if anybody wants to chime in. Two minutes, name, address. Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public-
We have, you have signed it.
Oh, here we go. Sorry about my bad, don't shoot me. They like to jump over the seat over here at me, don't they? My favorite friend, Mr. Mike Shea, how are you today?
Thank you, Chairman Grasso, and thank you, Jerry Walker, my councilman.
I'm here basically today to later testify on the aggravation in tourism bill, but I would like to spend one moment on talking about soil conservation and grading permit. We have a farm that I'll be talking about in just a little bit that was, been feeding Shadyside since 1720. And we built a traditional four-bent barn, mortise and tenon, round pegs, square pegs, huge timbers, a beautiful barn, the way they used to build them. And it is a sight behold. I'm a carpenter 45 years, and it really is a memorial to when we're gone, it's still going to speak for us. But that building went through soil conservation, and as a small farm, we would like to just say we appreciate anything that helps the small farm, and the minimal disturbance and not having to get a grading plan, that's another small step that can help, and I'll speak later to the aggravation in tourism bill. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, Mr. Shea.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
I would just say, if you have a chance to go to Shadyside and take a look at the barn that he has down there, it's really incredible.
Good stuff, huh?
Nope. No metal screws or nails in it at all, it's all wooden pegs. It's really cool. It's a beautiful, beautiful building.
Great, great. Okay, let's see, anybody else wants to come in? We have one more person on the sheet, if you also want to come in, please come up here. Maureen, looks like Heimbach, Heimbach?
I'm going to wave my right stick.
Going to wave it? Okay, well, thanks for coming out tonight, anyway. All right, anybody else? Don't see any movement, we're going to close the public hearing on 2417. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2417.
Bill Number 2417. An Ordinance Concerning Erosion and Sediment Control, Grading Permits, Agricultural Buildings.
All right, any discussion? Okay, there is an amendment to Bill Number 2417. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment clarifies that an erosion and sediment control plan is required for agricultural buildings that disturb more than one acre of land.
Motion to adopt, show move. Get a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is just to address, this is just to address a concern raised by the auditor that there could be a situation where a property is exactly one acre, and it wouldn't have been covered by the law, so we're trying to clarify that this were more than one acre and any other provisions.
So one acre or less, it's not covered by the law, anything over above one acre, this will work for.
Right.
Okay, fair enough. All right, let's see, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Peruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay, folks, Bill Number 2417 as amendment will be heard on May 15th, excuse me, 2017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2517.
Bill Number 2517. An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Agrotourism.
Okay, administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office, with me is Lynn Miller from Planning and Zoning, Lisa Barge from Economic Development, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Bill, as we discussed at the work session as well, Bill 2517 is response to the farms being able to, being unable to do certain agritourism activities due to the code or without prior approval. The county executive formed an agricultural, excuse me, agritourism work group that is chaired by Anna Chaney. This group was tasked to define agriculture and agritourism and determine allowable uses on the farms. The bill before you is a product of that group. This group's recommendations were presented to the county executive and were sent to the Farm Bureau and other groups to comment during this drafting process. The bill defines several agricultural terms and allows for farm owners to operate additional businesses that are an accessory to their farming. As we discussed at the work session, there have been several concerns raised about this bill. We received recommendations for changes late last week. We would ask you to hold this bill tonight for a vote and have that vote on May the 15th, where hopefully our amendments will be able to address all those concerns that have been raised about the bill, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council has right now. So we will plan to come with amendments on the 15th to try to address these concerns.
Anybody else say?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marzick, have you been in communications with the State Critical Area Commission about this bill? Because they've raised some concern to me about, I think, the definition of farming and if those new practices would be allowed in the RCA area. So I believe they've been in touch with the staff level folks, and I just want to make sure that that might be included in what you're looking at for possible amendments.
I have not spoken to them, but Ms. Miller is shaking her head, so I presume she did.
Sure.
Hi, excuse me, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. We did have an inquiry from the Critical Area Commission as to whether the bill would allow two particular things they were interested in. One was agritourism in general, and the other was a farm product distribution center, which is a use listed in the bill. And the way the bill's drafted now, because agritourism is listed as a separate use, a conditional use, in the bill right now, and it's not listed in 1813, the Critical Area section of the code, I can't quote the number, our determination, and the law office's determination was that the bill would not allow agritourism uses, although farming isn't allowed use in the Critical Area.
Right, I think that's where the confusion was.
Right. Also, the bill as drafted now would not allow farm product distribution center in the Critical Area for the same reason, and when I say Critical Area, I'm speaking about the RCA.
Yes. Okay, so I'm hearing that you're aware of the issue, and I think that, I mean, I've been talking with staff at the Critical Area Commission, who says they've been talking with you guys, so it's on your radar, I guess, Mr. Marzick, to keep an eye out for that as part of your package of amendments. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing on 2517, and we've got a sign-up sheet, so I'm going to call off everybody's name, and of course, we got the Mr. Mike Shea to come on down, and it looks like Ms. Vicki Hollingsdorf, is it? And the next one, in small writing, looks like Stephen Marley, and John Faber, Paul Christensen, and Ms. Maureen Hembach, come on down. Well, thank everybody for coming out tonight, we always do appreciate the input, and we'll start off with Mr. Shea. You know, it's two minutes, name, address, and let it roll.
Mike Shea, Red Top Farm in Shadyside, and as I mentioned, our farm has been feeding Shadyside since 1720, and I'll make it clear right now, passage of this bill as it stands right now would put Red Top Farm out of business. My wife and I are proud to be part of the local food-to-table movement, where our neighbors have an opportunity to purchase our honey, our eggs, our produce, all through the wintertime. And by purchasing on our farm, customers enjoy a farm experience, and they're willing to pay that premium price. They are lucky that they have a farm that lives near them to have local, good, organic This bill, as it currently is written, is, does not allow currently approved farm uses. Planning and Zoning has their own internal list of currently approved farm uses, and this bill makes some of those uses conditionally. But most importantly, this, the way this bill stands, because of its specific wording in the bill, would not let the public in any building that we now have, including our greenhouses for U-PIC, or a classic barn that we have just mentioned, where we sell our produce, or any farm building that we want to build in the future. Our biggest problem with this bill is the way it's written. "The public or guests may only occupy buildings constructed and approved for public use under a lawfully issued building permit for which all final inspections have been completed and a certificate of occupancy has been issued by the Department of Inspections and Permits." It makes it impossible now or in the future for the public to have access to any currently standing farm bill, or one that would be built through soil conservation in the future. Please follow the lead of Councilman Walker. His district represents so many farms, and he has a history of being an advocate for farms. This bill attempts to do too much, and farming and tourism are two different things. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Vicki Holsendorf?
Very good.
Now, that was a tongue twister there.
Did I have to punch a button? Okay, this is VK Holsendorf, how are you?
VK, okay.
So I'm the farmer at Red Top Farm in Shadyside, our address is 1392 West Fever Road, Shadyside, Maryland, and we're a little bit of a hybrid farm. When you think of farming, say, on the eastern shore, or even in parts of Anaronda County, you think of large bean and corn farms, which are pretty much contract-growing for the chicken, Purdue people, or something like that. We're a small farm, we're only 13 acres, and this farm has been farmed since the 1700s, but we have, we're growing produce, so we sort of higher-margin products, you get more for a tomato than you do a bag of feed corn, so to speak. And my market is actually in the wintertime, so I grow in high tunnels, plastic greenhouses, and we have, the local community can come and do U-PIC, we've got chickens and donkeys and a lot of families come and bring their kids on a Saturday to get their fresh produce and let the kids pick stuff. What, but the problem is, the way this bill's written, and I think they passed out, this thing, you see a picture of the barn and the greenhouses, in theory, I would have to make people stand outside while I went and got their tomato, or their carrot, or something like that, and if it was raining, or if I wanted to have my farm stand in the barn, they can't come in this barn. You know, they would point at the tomato in the barn they want, and I'd go deliver it to them. I mean, that's currently the way it is, so that doesn't work very well for anyone. And for us, we're kind of focused on a community farm, so there are people coming in and out, and there's a really high demand. There'll be five cars lined up on a Saturday morning, waiting to come, to see the lights come on, and to come and see the donkeys. So there's a big demand for small farm experience, agritourism, and it can be a large definition, but for the kind of things we're doing, it's really important to get this bill right, and right now, it's not. Thank you.
No problem, thank you so much. Okay, and it looks like Mr. Stephen Marley, thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Marley, I live at 524 Herring Avenue. I'm here representing the consolidated opinion of the advocates for Herring Bay. While the advocates of Herring Bay have concerns about statutory language in this bill, we want to stress from the outset that we are in support of efforts to promote the economic viability of our farming community, which is a key to the strength of our local community and plays a critical role in promoting the health of the bay. However, many of the provisions in this bill pose environmental and social issues that have not been sufficiently resolved. Topics like value-added processing, farm distribution centers, nurseries, and equestrian centers should be studied more thoroughly and addressed in separate legislation. We also recommend that the county consider creating more than one zoning tier for agritourism to account for the wide range of varieties of activities covered by this business model. Based on our preliminary review, we see five major shortcomings of the bill as introduced. Newly authorized farming and nursery activities could degrade ecologically important land within the resource conservation area and open space conservation areas. The bill lacks limits on impervious surfaces associated with new uses. Similarly, there are no enforceable metrics for determining whether an activity is an accessory use. Three, value-added processing could involve slaughtering, packaging, fermenting, and quasi-industrial activities that warrant special citing and performance standards but are largely left unregulated by this bill. Farm distribution centers could be operated as a large-scale wholesale markets that primarily serve farms outside of Anaronda County. And lastly, the performance standards for agritourism are not tailored to the wide spectrum of activities that are directly or implicitly authorized by the bill, which results in some activities being subject to too much regulation and others to too little. We are hopeful that if our concerns can be addressed, we'd be in a position to support this legislation that boosts the agricultural economy in Anaronda County. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, Mr. John Faber, thanks for coming out today, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name's John Faber, 4570 Owensville-Sudley Road in Harwood, Maryland, and I'm president of the Anaronda County Farm Bureau, and I appreciate the county council's time this evening. I'm here to address Bill 2517 concerning agritourism in the county. Farm Bureau has concerns with this bill as introduced. First, I'd like to express my appreciation to the work group that put in many months of work in addressing the recommendations that they put forth, and also economic development for their coordination efforts. Agritourism is a growing addition to the agricultural community, and we seem to hear often that farm operations that already are, are looking forward to adding agritourism to their process, more so in counties bordering large urban communities such as Anaronda County. Anaronda County Farm Bureau Board, the Anaronda County Farm Bureau Board met recently to discuss the proposed bill with representatives from the county also in attendance. Many issues and concerns were discussed, and the, were discussed and possible solutions discussed. A very, it was a very positive meeting. At this time, Farm Bureau is withholding its support of the bill as proposed. I will say Farm Bureau is committed and excited about continued work with the various groups to define needed changes and offer suggestions for amendments. This is a very important piece of legislation. I am confident that our concerns can be addressed and amendments submitted, that Anaronda County Farm Bureau will be pleased to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faber. Okay, next person, Mr. Paul Christensen, if I'm saying that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. My name is Paul Christensen, I live in Tracy's Landing in South County. I'm very concerned about this bill, because in the 24 years that I've lived there, I think this is one of the most threatening things that I've seen come down the pipe. Let me tell you why. This is a classic example of top-down legislation. This is a classic example of top-down legislation. This has come down from the governor asking the county to take a look at ag tourism. A working group has been farmed, a report has been made, that's weaved its way through the county offices, and here we are tonight, starting to talk about turning it into code. A couple of important things have not happened, though. We haven't talked at all, or very little, to the people who are actually impacted by this. And this is the mainstream farmers, the guys that are raising corn and soybeans down there, if you look at them when you drive down Route 2. And to a much more egregious extent, it's not asking the local homeowners, who are not farmers, who are 90% of the population in South County and similar rural areas, what their opinions are. Nobody's had a chance to say anything. This doesn't work. We all know, from high school civics, that top-down legislation doesn't work, and we've got to do something a little bit different. We've got to start asking the people what they need and what they want, and bring that into our legislation. So I'm here tonight to ask you to stop this train that's about to crash, and let's take a more rational look at what we can do. And the first thing we have to do is try to get some data from the people involved. We could do this with a poll. We could call a lot of people. We could put some staff time on it. We could make some personal visits. For $10,000 or less, we'd get a lot of data. It'd be very helpful here, and would impact spending of millions of dollars later. So I think the first thing we have to do is get that data. We have to table this bill until we have that data. And then, secondly, if we get that data, and we still want to pursue this, we have to break this bill up into manageable parts. It's way too broad. It's way too broad-brush, and it's just not going to work. So I implore you, help us out. This is a train about to wreck, and let's try to stop it. Thank you.
I don't think you have to worry about a whole lot there, Mr. Paul, because you've got a lot of pro-farmers up here, including yours truly, including Mr. Walker down here, and probably some more of my colleagues. So we're not going to send anything down there that's going to wreck your life. You can rest assured that. I've seen some of this going on, and I always said over and over again, ask the people to actually do it, instead of the people making decisions for the people that they don't even know what they're doing. So you ain't got to worry about that. We'll make sure things are right. Okay? All right, next person, Ms. Maureen Hembach.
Hi, Hembach. I'm Maureen Hembach.
Thanks for coming out.
My residence is at 195 Harwood Road. My husband and I are the owners of Thanksgiving Farm Winery, the first commercial winery in the county, and I was honored to be a member of the working group that spent several months putting recommendations together on this agrotourism bill. However, I have some concerns in that, at the end, the committee was not really given a lot of time to have input into the final language of the legislation, and I understand the pressures of getting the bill through. But the process was curtailed, and I think a lot of the members of the working group felt left out from the end product. Second of all, when we built the winery, we went through the full site plan and building permit process. It took us approximately two years. The end result of the process was increased costs and professional fees, such that we had to scale back the size of our building. And as a winery, we really depend upon agrotourism. Customers come, they get to see the process, they get to see the grapevines, we get to explain what it means to make a handcrafted wine. That doesn't happen if we sell our product in Edgewater Liquors, and we're very happy that Edgewater Liquors carries our wine. I'm not saying that at all. But it's a very different experience. The customers get to see our vineyards, they get to see our processing area, and we get to talk with them. This is a very important issue for us and for a lot of other farmers in the county. And I would request that the working committee and the public get adequate time to consider whatever final amendments are going to be put forward. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Ms. Hembach, just want to let you know that with any legislation, right, if the council isn't happy with it, we can kill it and start over again. So we try to make things that are always right, and just the matter of us starting over again is not a big deal. You know, so don't let anybody try to feed you that. It costs us a couple hundred dollars to re-advertise it all over again, but we'd rather it be right. The administration is committed to make sure that this is right. This is why they've taken the point to ask to hold the bill tonight. Okay?
Thank you.
So hopefully, we'll do all the best thing we can for you guys, okay? Okay, thank you so much for coming down. If anybody else wants to chime in on 2517, please feel to come down and say your two-minute piece. Okay? I see no more movement, or do I? All right, we're going to close the public hearing on 2517. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2517.
Bill 2517, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Agrotourism.
Okay. The administration wants to hold Bill 2517, and we'll need a motion to close the public hearing and hold the vote?
Motion to hold.
Second.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the vote to hold Bill 2517.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Strombauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 2517 is passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2617.
Bill 2617, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Dog Grooming Parlors.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Before they get seated, I'd just like to make a quick point. If it's possible, if the administration on that previous bill could circulate some of those amendments in advance of the meeting, so that some of us up here that are getting ready to make a decision on the fly, we don't find out a day in advance or two days, we have opportunity to get feedback from some of the folks who testified. That'd be helpful. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got it.
Let the record show that Mr. Marzick nodded his head. We will do that.
Okay. Mr. Marzick?
It's Mr. Pruski's bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Ms. Pruski, sorry about that.
Just really brief. We had the work session, obviously, and thank you to the administration. Simply, this is to allow dog grooming and W-1. We had several businesses reach out, but one in particular, and we're just trying to solve an issue I think that's very simple in terms of the code, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Administration?
We support the bill, Mr. Chairman.
It's easy. We all get along today. That's good. I like that. Okay, we're going to... Any questions in the council? Seeing no movement, going to open up the public hearing on 2617. If anybody wants to chime in, please feel free to come down. Seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 2617. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 2617.
Bill number 2617, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Dog Grooming Parlors.
Okay, any discussion in the council? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 2617.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca. Mr. Strombauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Six the affirmative, one absent. Bill number 2617 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2717.
Bill number 2717, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Modifications.
Okay. All right, I am the sponsor of this one, and really, what kind of brought this on, folks, is that I just felt that there was unfair justice done the last time. The administration put down a piece of legislation about cluster developments, and originally started on like a 50-foot setback, and there was all kinds of amendments that were put onto this cluster development, which I basically feel diluted the bill and pretty much made it worth anything. So I've always had a philosophy that in a discussion or an agreement of something, that all the parties should walk away mad. And if all the parties don't walk away mad, then it's not a fair way of doing the bill. And so the last part of the deal was, in the cluster development, I believe the intentions of cluster development was to protect the environmental issues of a development. And it appears to me that what happens a lot of times in these cluster developments is that the developers find a loophole, and they constantly attack the environmental part of the cluster development through things called modifications. In a letter to Mr. Tom, asked him basically, what is the majority of the modifications seeked for? And he replied back that most of them are done in three areas, usually in forestation, open space, and rec area. Is that pretty right, you're right, Mr. Tom?
That's correct.
So the thing of it is, is that the whole point of the cluster bill was to protect the environmental features, but then we're allowing the developers to come along and modify the environmental features. So what's the purpose of the cluster bill? I mean, what's the sense of the law? So I made a point to say at the last time that I would come back with another piece of legislation that I thought was fair to the developers, but also this time, fair to the environmental protections and the people that are trying to protect the environment. And I think my bill pretty much accomplishes that. And what I'm basically saying is, is that if you're going to do a cluster development, you're not going to ask for modifications in the three areas, which is the forest, the rec, and open space. And to me, that seemed pretty fair. Unfortunately, it seems as though that I may have to offer a little bit extra cheese into the deal. And so what I've done is I've prepared amendment after that that's going to remove one of those spots, and I'm hoping that if the people are sincere about what the law really is to cluster development, that they'll support my amendment, and ultimately, down the road, will support the bill, because then I think it's fair for everybody, the environmental concerns, and also the developers. So with that being said, from my open statement, Mr. Marzick, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, and the county executive's office, with me at the table Larry Tom from Planning and Zoning, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. The county executive opposes this bill. First, to talk about what it does, it does two things. It removes the need for a property owner to seek a modification in order to pay a fee in lieu to meet forest clearing mitigation. Planning and zoning is advised, this is a moot issue, because the Office of Law has said, under the code, planning and zoning cannot require this modification. Second, this allows modifications for forest conservation, recreation area, open space requirement. As you just discussed, Mr. Chairman, this modification restriction was a major part of our original bill that we had put in, 9416, but that was limited to development tracts of five acres or less. This five-acre limitation was established because the goal was to try to address cluster developments, so they're dealing with small infill lots. This bill would extend it to all cluster development throughout the county, regardless of the size of that property. We feel that this is overreaching and would have unintended consequences, such as we discussed at the work session, that it could prevent helpful or good modifications that could be put into place with the development. So for those reasons, we would ask you to oppose this bill.
Okay. And I'm going to throw my touch in here. When the last bill came down, I honestly kind of felt that it was a whole dog and pony show. It was a feel-good piece of legislation that really wasn't going anywhere. That's the way it looks like to me. And in my situation over here, I'm saying, okay, per planning and zoning, that most of the modifications are attacking the very basis of why the cluster law was put into place. And to me, that just seems very unproductive. Now, the payment in lieu of, you want to clarify that, Mr. Swain? Because I always thought the payment in lieu of is that if we had to put trees up, they can only get payment in lieu of if it was in a swamp area where it was impossible. Am I wrong about that, or what have we got?
Not exactly. The way the fee-in-lie program works is...
The way the fee-in-lie program works is, under both state law and county law, there is a threshold determination that needs to be made. Basically, the planning and zoning officer is determining that reforestation is not feasible on that particular site. That allows, once the planning and zoning officer makes that determination, that allows the payment of a fee in lieu, which is put into the county reforestation program. The reason, I think the justification in the bill for the provision is simply that there is some argument that can be made under current code, under subtitle six of Article 17, that a modification would be required. But I think ultimately, it's been the Office of Law's position that it's not. It's not required for payment of a fee in lieu. So it arises out of both state law and county law, the right to be able to pay a fee in lieu.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Strombauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following up on that, Mr. Marzick, you illustrated, or you brought forth two areas of concern. The first was with that fee-in-lie position. I think you said that it was unnecessary or redundant, but Mr. Swain just told us, and I think the Office of Law recommended that that part be included in the bill as a clarification. Is that...
Well, I think it's been the Office of Law's position that a modification is not required for payment of a fee in lieu. However, there has also been some interpretation by the Office of Planning and Zoning that it was required. So it's really to clarify what the rights are under both state and county law.
Right. So again, I'm hearing you say that it's a clarification. I'm hearing Mr. Marzick say the administration thinks it's unnecessary, but that clarification, Mr. Marzick, wouldn't do harm to your position, right? You just feel it's redundant?
Yes.
Yeah. So the primary opposition is the second part?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Walker.
Mr. Tom, I think Mr. Marzick sort of made this point, but I just wanted to kind of maybe get it from your perspective, since you're the one who sort of deals with these things on a day-to-day basis. It seems to me that, you know, I guess I always worry about when we say never, you know, like, don't allow this at all, because it strikes me that there are certain situations where I think, as Mr. Marzick pointed out, that there could be a benefit received from a modification. Am I off, or...
No, I think that's correct.
Could you give us maybe an example? Mr. Grasso is arguing that, and I understand his perspective is that he feels like that these are being granted, and that all of the results of these granted modifications are detrimental. And I would suggest I don't necessarily, and I don't know this because I don't do this for a living, but it seems to me that there could be some that would be beneficial.
Right. Right. And perhaps the best way to kind of describe the scenarios here is that when we were working on 9416, our goal was to provide solutions to the complaint that we had been receiving from several neighborhood communities as it related to cluster subdivisions on infill lots. And typically, these were small parcels. So to some extent, it's a bit more detrimental to grant modifications on smaller parcels of land than it would be for a tract of, let's say, 5, 10, 15, 20 acres, where you have the ability to accomplish a cluster subdivision and still have a lot of land left to enhance your forest conservation areas and enhance your open space. The concern that we had in developing 9416 was that when you have infill parcels, if you're granting modifications to relieve some of these requirements, you're maybe achieving a subdivision that's not necessarily compatible to the surrounding area. So that, you know, perspective in general terms might help answer your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, with that being said, we're going to turn around. We're going to open up public hearing on 2717. If anybody wants to chime in on this, come on down, say hello. Thanks for coming out. We'll start off with you, please, and name, address, and two minutes of sunshine.
My name is Lisa Bender. I live at 712 Shore Road, Severn Park, Maryland. And I urge you to support Bill 2717. I think it's a great compromise. Zoning and building and construction regulations and laws are not developed without forethought and consideration of many, many factors. A lot of work goes into the development and to figuring out what is right, what is wrong. However, too often, so many modifications and variances are granted to developers that the intent of the law and the original factors are lost. Too often, the primary focus of development is to maximize profit. It is not necessarily to develop responsibly. Not all development's bad, but irresponsible development is. What the county talked about in payment of lieu is often not enforced or performed. And in theory, it could be good, but what benefit is clear-cutting Anarondale County and forestrying Garrett County? It's not going to help the detrimental effects that can occur here. The actual cost of granting modification after modification for development is high. It includes permanent loss of environmental features and the resulting increase of detrimental secondary effects that could occur, sometimes without being foresawed. It also increases the cost to the county to support the increased population and the need for county public services, and the support, maintenance, and installation of the infrastructure... need for county public services and the support, maintenance, and installation of the infrastructure that high-density and often highly-modification developments require. The people of Anarundale County rarely benefit from irresponsible development. Requiring everybody to play by the same rules and sticking to the rules is the only way the residence and the beauty of Anarundale County can be maintained. Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you. Ma'am, name and address, please, two minutes.
My name is Elizabeth Rosberg, and I'm speaking tonight as a member of the Executive Board of the Growth Action Network of Anarundale County, better known as GAN. GAN supports Councilman Grasso's efforts to improve cluster development and supports Bill 2717. This bill would help address several major problems. In 2016, 516 modifications were requested. All but three were approved. That is, 513 developments that could not meet our county code as proposed. They needed some way to modify our county code to fit their development. In 2016, one development requested 13 modifications. Yes, 13 code requirements that they could not meet. And you know what? All 13 were approved. So far, in 2017, 158 modifications have been requested, and all but two have been approved. Having so many modifications has taken away many cluster requirements, resulting in developments that don't have the environmental features that we were talking about. What we've gotten is so many houses close together on very small lots without significant open space, no forest conservation, all the trees are removed, including the large specimen trees, and recreation area? Oh, we don't need that. Get a modification. Cluster development code was designed to give builders some flexibility on lot sizes so that trees, green, and open space could be preserved and used by our residents. However, that is not how it is being enforced. There remain other issues with the cluster law, but this bill is a start and will make a big improvement to the residents of cluster development's quality of life outside.
Thank you so much. How are you doing today, ma'am? Name and address, please, for the record.
Pat Lynch, 1648 Homewood Road, Annapolis, Maryland.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. The purpose of the old Cluster Development Bill 9416, which we worked on very, very hard, all of us, was preservation. In fact, the title of the bill was changed from the Cluster Development Bill to the preservation-oriented bill. The new bill that Chairman Grasso is sponsoring is primarily focused on three simple elements. And for those of us who worked on 9416, it was a very complicated bill. This is three simple elements, and if I raised my fingers and said hi to my colleagues, they'd know what I was talking about. Forest conservation, open space, and rec areas. How could anybody argue against those three elements? These are all related to the preservation of our environment and our extensive shorelines and our bay watershed. 2717 is a simple ordinance to protect cluster development parcels from development actions that negatively impact the preservation of our protected areas. Without protective legislation, our forests would, they'd be cut down, watersheds polluted, and the rec areas reduced, and we all know that for a fact. The modifications require no public hearing and can be granted with a pretty quick administrative approval. Some developers have received, as Elizabeth says, over a dozen modifications on one property. Acres of trees, as I said, have been cut down. Stormwater facilities are allowed to be constructed on, and in some cases, intermix with rec areas, allowing runoff into the play areas or subsequently into our watershed. Major cluster development problems are found in small parcels, particularly the smaller parcels, where CDs are designed to the maximum density with little consideration for preservation. I look at what has, this has turned into as a profit-oriented development, not a preservation-oriented development. Please approve 2717. It's a small step forward in protecting our county's precious resources.
I think you hit it right on the hammer, a profit-oriented development. You hit it right. You got that right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trump, Aaron. Or, excuse me, Mr. Peruka.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question, Ms. Lynch? Thanks for being here tonight. As you well know, 9416 was aimed at, I think, as Mr. Tom mentioned, that it was aimed at smaller infill lots. That was the, the purpose of it, or at least it evolved to be the purpose of it. Maybe it wasn't the original purpose. But this particular bill would be, does not have that kind of approach. Is that...
No, I look at this as much more expansive. In other words, we actually started the, in 9416, we started looking at the entire expanse of the county when we realized that so many of the problems have been found in the Severna Park area in small developments. That's when the focus started to really, not leave the whole expanse, but focus on the five acres or less.
Ms. Rosberg, would you, would you agree, would you agree that the scope of this is the same as the scope of that, or is this scope broader than that?
I would, yes and no. We started with 10 acres originally, and even before that. Actually, we started with everything, and then we narrowed down. But here's my point. One of the things that Mr. Tom said was that there could be, with one of the questions, I believe it was from one of the other councilmen's, that there could be benefits to modifications. And I don't understand, if they don't meet the current county code, how can a modification be a benefit? Modification is taking something away, trying to alter the county code. Then the county code should be changed. But if you're trying to... Sorry.
No, that's okay. You said, I was, I was, in my mind, trying to, trying to respond to your question. Modifications aren't, are they necessarily taking something away, or are they just changing something?
Usually, they're asking to change something. For example, with specimen trees, which I believe is the number-one modification request, is to cut down specimen trees. And I understand sometimes you may, you have a, you may have a development that has a tree right in the middle of where you're proposing to do that. But I just feel like on these, particularly these three issues with forest conservation, open space, and rec area, that you shouldn't be able to modify those, no matter if it's a big lot or a small lot.
What if the modification, I'm with you. What if the modification was to actually save a specimen tree? What if it had that result?
That's not, you don't do it. You don't...
That's not possible?
No, it's not possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to come down on 2717 before we close out? There we go. Former chairman, Mr. Ladd.
Button here someplace.
Name and a record, even though we all know who you are.
DeLadd, 1537 Shipshew Road. I'm sitting back there listening. This is about amending the existing code, which is the bulk requirements as modified by a cluster section. In that cluster section, you meet certain conditions, and then you have the authority to waive the minimum lot size. I believe that's what it is by definition. In the previous 9416 or whatever, we didn't, we specified what the minimum lot size was. So we're back with the original bill, and which you, when you have cluster, I mean, open space requirements, you have to set aside 30% of the project, set it aside. And yet, those 30% have a building right on it. And therefore, they are going to get less yield on the, on the property because this 30% is smaller. So now, if it's, if the bill, as you have proposed, Mr. Chairman, is not supported, they can go in and waive that 30%. They come in and can build the whole lot, or nearly all the lot, and still reduce the lot sizes that would otherwise be required if you weren't doing cluster development. One of the themes that emerged in the discussion was that we never quite achieved the maximum density on lots prescribed in code. What we do, if your amendment does not pass, they can go in, any builder can go in, use cluster development rules, waive or modify the cluster requirement, and get out of that the ability to have any minimum lot size he chooses. That's my understanding. And I apologize for getting in the weeds. You guys know that's where I live sometimes. But it is, it is an unintended consequence of not having your bill pass. That's correct, of not passing. In other words, if they can come in and waive their open space requirement under the cluster thing, they have the ability to operate at any lot size within that thing. I think that's right. Now, Larry may want to come up and disagree, but I don't have all this stuff in my head. But that's the point we got before. So I'm up to support what you're trying to do, Chair.
Thank you so much. Well, basically, we got the keys at a candy store, and that's what we're giving somebody when we don't pass this legislation. Mr. Peruka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I ask, Mr. Mars, Mr. Tom, if you, if you would respond, these, the statistics that Ms. Rosberg quoted, I think, call for a response. She said that 516 last year, 516, 513 were granted, and this year, similar kind of story, where 158, all but two were granted. Can you elaborate on that, or tell us why that might be the case?
I can certainly get you those numbers. I don't have that off the top of my head. But I will say, modifications aren't necessarily relief just of environmental features or relief granting or removal of a steep, you know, granting or removal of a specimen tree or a modification of steep slope criteria or any of that, any of those environmental issues. A lot of modifications are for time extensions, for changes in the process. In other words, as you know, the development process involves three steps. You have your sketch plan, you have your final, you have your final plan approval, then you go into, into your grading permits. So sometimes, there's reasons to grant a modification to relieve one of those steps. So there's, there's lots of reasons for, there's lots of different kinds of modifications. So out of that figure of 500, I doubt very seriously the majority of those were for relief of environmental features.
So to her other point that she made, which was that modifications are necessarily, taking something away, I think she said, can you speak to that, that point, then?
Well, modifications are discretionary. The planning and zoning officer has the authority under the code to grant modifications to any provisions to Article 17, with the exception of anything that affects the adequacy of public facilities, any provisions that affect the critical area sections of the code, and any provisions affecting the bogs. So just about any section under Article 17 can be granted a modification. Now, you know, I'm not saying this to defend 10 years' worth of my granting modifications, but we don't do this just because I want to help a developer out. There's very strict criteria as to why, that I have to make, to me, in order to grant a modification. There has to be a reason for it. It's not just because, you know, I want to grant additional density, or I want to establish more lots, or the granted developer A, more relief to developer B. We try to be very consistent in our approach to granting modifications. There has to be a good reason for it. Usually, when we grant a modification that affects a specific site plan, it's because it provides us with an opportunity to do a more rational layout. And going back to Mr. Walker's earlier question, if I grant a modification to a forest con area at a specific part of a large tract of land, I have the ability also to require additional afforestation or reforestation to mitigate the granting of that modification. So it's not a black-and-white situation by any means. And I think it's important for the council to understand that, you know, this is not an arbitrary thing that the planning and zoning officer performs.
Thank you. I think I'm finished. Thank you very much.
Hold on. We still got the public hearing still going on. So go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Oh. Finish up the public hearing?
Yeah. Anybody else want to come down and speak on 2717? You guys go ahead, might as well stay right here, because I got my shot at yous, too. There we go. How you doing today, sir? Name and address, please.
Bill Kraus, 1528 Warfield Road, Edgewood, Maryland. Sir, I would submit to you that if 516 modifications are submitted and 513 are approved, that's not an exercise of discretion, it's an exercise of sleepwalking. This is, you know, Mr. Tom was asking a very simple question by Mr. Walker. Can you give me an example of a modification that results in a positive benefit? And what he got was, well, the right to give me the modification creates the opportunity. That's not an answer. That's legalistic. The reality is, this is being used as an open doorway to drive trucks through to construction sites. This is not being done to create playgrounds for kids, or preserve trees, or forestrying. This is being done to allow developers to modify to maximize land usage. And I don't doubt that Mr. Tom believes that there are strict limits. I'm sure there are. But if you're exercising it by granting 513 out of 516, the limits don't work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? You hit it on the hammer with me, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, we close the public hearing on 2717. All right, I think, Mr. Walker, you wanted to chime in?
Yeah. Mr. Tom, on those numbers, I guess you can get back to us on the number of modifications. But this bill directly relates to modifications that are related to cluster subdivisions. Assuming that the modifications that Ms. Rosberg highlighted were all modifications, is that maybe accurate?
That's my assumption, that she's quoting.
Okay. Is it possible for you, when you get back to us on those, to give us the number for cluster subdivisions, since that's what we're dealing with?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Trump. Just one more point of clarification. I mean, Mr. Tom testified that he suspected a large portion of the modifications granted. Were not having to do, you know, were some, things like timing or other things that didn't have to do with environmental. The legislation before us, unless I'm mistaken, only affects modifications for three things. It looks like it's about to be two things. So that's forest con, rec area, and open space. But it looks like we're going to see an amendment to take rec area out. So if you're generating a report already, if you could...
Taylor.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a way to show how many of the modifications relate to these three, or if the bill is amended, those two, that would be helpful, too. I don't know what data source you have available, but if you can do that, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. May I, I know that you, I know that you have, you have something to say, but I would, just for the, just, I would like to weigh in, that it has been, it has been said a number of times that the only reason that it's been implied, the only reason that Mr. Tom might have done something would be, would be to maximize profit for somebody. And I just, I don't, I don't follow that series of statements, and I don't agree with that argument. I think that's, that's kind of an unfair disposition. At the same time, I think it would be, it would be very helpful if you did give us some, some statistics like Mr. Trump is asking for. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. I want to, I want to throw something in here just to make it go a little bit longer. Mr. Tom did send a letter that you said the majority of the modifications were generally in those three areas. Is that correct?
As it relates to cluster subdivisions?
Yes.
Probably.
Okay. So that right there tells me everything that I need to know, that the majority of those modifications are in that three area. All right? Of course, there's other situations that we can do. The argument, I think, that one, that one should make is that because there may be an exception, like Mr. Walker was just saying, that that really shouldn't be the rule. Okay? There always can be an exception made, all right? And that, that shouldn't be our ruling to decide that we don't want to protect our environment because there may be that one exception. All right? Sometimes, bad things can come out of that. And, and it was clearly that Larry Tom just said clearly that, you know, hey, those modifications are in these three areas. So we're trying to protect something that we've got and we cherish, and yeah, there might be an exception to the rule. So the question is, do we not protect what we got because of that one time that something can't... can't be done that might be a benefit? Because it looks like the majority of the times, it is to the benefit of the cluster development to protect these three items. That's what it looks like to me. I would hate that this council would make a decision on that what if, like Mr. Walker was just saying, and I'm not picking on Mr. Walker, I'm just giving an example. What if it was something outside of that? What if it was something good? Okay? Doesn't sound like that there's too many of those examples. It sounds like it's more the other weight that we need to protect. And the gentleman that just got up there and spoke, you know, I'm not picking on Mr. Tom, because I know his retirement's coming up, you know, but one of the things that we have to be concerned as the council is, we don't know what type of person is going to take over the position of Mr. Tom. Is he going to be a conservative, you know, as far as forestation or woods, or is he just going to be one of these guys that lets the developer really kind of free-road? It depends on his disposition, on how he feels about things. Now, if I was there, the developer is going to have one heck of a fight getting a modification out of me. But that might not be the predecessor of Larry Tom. And with these, this piece of legislation I'm putting in, I'm trying to protect that from happening, because we don't know how things are going to play out. It was interesting to see that the one lady come up here with all the facts on how many modifications were offered. That just does backflips for me. How many was in the open space and all that? I mean, to me, this just doesn't sound right. And I would ask, like I said, the council to support this bill, because we don't know what's going to come after Larry Tom, and we really need to start looking out for the environment. So with that being said.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Fink.
Thank you.
You ain't gonna let me get, finish that, are you?
I thought you were ignoring me. Mr. Tom, the, I came into this, and I think Mr. Walker really summed it up at the beginning very nicely, when he, you know, he's concerned about any time we say never. And never means never. And I came into this thinking, or concerned that, you know, it's very hard, if not impossible, to try and legislate what's right for every single piece of property in the entire county from this dais. So that's kind of where I start my thinking. And then, you know, we talked about the modifications, and the numbers that were thrown out were pretty, pretty big, and certainly caught my attention. Are there scenarios where a modification is made in cluster development, or outside cluster development, where it's good for the environment? Where the environment will say, oh, that's, that was a good idea. I'm glad he did that. And if so, can you just give some kind of generic, you know, examples, one or two examples of, of something where people would say, you know what, that was a great idea, that's probably something that's, that's great for our creeks or our bay?
Right. I think the one example that I gave to Mr. Walker about the possibility of getting additional forest on larger tracts of land, and this would be true for conventional subdivisions as well. I think another good example would be, in the granting of a modification for a cluster subdivision, there's an opportunity to, to have a more rational layout, where I can protect the floodplain by granting a modification to the rec area. I think that's a positive.
And by protecting the floodplain, or making that modification, does that necessarily guarantee more homes on that, on that piece of property?
Not necessarily.
Do a majority of your modifications, taking out the time modifications and that stuff, a majority of the time, does that equal more homes on the property?
Not necessarily.
No. So it's just a guess?
And again, with cluster subdivisions, you're not guaranteed more than what's permitted to you under the code. You can never exceed, in any development, the maximum allowed under the code.
Right, but if, every time that a modification, and I don't know the answer to this, and I always hate asking questions, I don't know the answer, but if somebody comes to you to get a modification under cluster, does that always guarantee them more homes than they would have gotten had they not got that modification from you? Or sometimes it's just the basic layout, hey, I'm going to get 18 homes under cluster, under cluster right now, but I really want to, you know, that it be an oval, you know, I want the homes to be in a circle instead of a rectangle, and I need a modification?
Every, every case is different, every property is different. I couldn't say that you would never get more lots, but again, you can't exceed the number of lots that are permitted under the code.
So when we talk about modifications, they're not always a bad thing. Yeah, sure, sometimes, and probably a lot of times, it does equal more homes. Sometimes it's a timing issue, it just allows more time, or a different process, and sometimes it might just mean a different layout in the community, which at the end of the day is protecting a floodplain, or saving some of these trees, versus these trees over there.
Right.
So there's no reason for us to assume that all modifications, or even a majority of modifications, are a bad thing in terms of environment and more homes.
I would say that, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Let me hold that one second. Mr. Tom, in response to Councilman Fink over here, would you say it's more the exception than the rule, okay, a modification is for better of the environment? An exception or the rule that the modification is good for the environment? Now, when you have to think about that, that's a pretty clear answer, what we've got.
I would not say it's the exception. It, again, there's no absolute here, because every site is different, every request for a modification has to be taken under its own merits. And again, we don't grant modifications if we think it's going to be harmful to the, to the overall, you know, one of the criteria that we have to look at is to make sure that it's, that it's not harmful to the outlawing community. So, you know.
Okay. Let me ask something over here. Councilman Fink was also saying...
Mr. Chairman, if I can, on this, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Marsick.
Part of the problem here is the presumption that all modifications are bad. Right? It's not even necessary that they're bad for the environment, they're bad, you know, it could be just bad that the surrounding community doesn't like the way it looks. It has nothing to do with the environment, right? That has to do with, this community doesn't like that this development was set up this way. We heard a lot of that during the six or eight months that Mr. Tom convened that group. This is a lot of community activists who are concerned about these developments going in. And I think you and other, Mr. Peruka I know, and others traveled around and saw different cluster developments. Some people say they're ugly, some people say they look great. I think that your, the focus is too much on the environmental side of it, when it could be just that some people don't like these developments going into their neighborhoods, and it has nothing to do with the environmental side of it.
And my hesitancy in answering that question is, is because there's, you know, you've got modifications that are, that waive certain provisions that have nothing to do with the environment.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's hard to, you can't quantify that.
All right, so let me be clear about this. For, for the third time, in several conversations, all I'm saying is, is that you can't have any modifications, assuming this amendment passed, in force and open space. That's the only thing I'm saying. And if everything else that can possibly happen on that cluster development, you can't mess with the force and open space. So I didn't ever said that, said to anybody that all modifications, it's two, two things that the cluster development was supposed to protect, period. Councilman Fink turned around and said to Mr. Tom just a moment ago, does modifications necessarily mean more houses? And Mr. Tom responded back that you cannot exceed whatever the zoning is. But what we fail to realize is that if a development went down, and it might have been zoned for an R-10, and lo and behold, because of the way that development is situated, it only might have been able to get five houses per acre instead of 10. And because now we've turned around and allowed a modification, now we could turn around and put more houses, so we max it out to the 10. So yes, it can increase the density of the cluster development, but it can't exceed the max of what it's zoned for. So now, we've talked twice over here about, I'm not asking to stop everything, I'm just asking for two things. That's it, what the cluster bill is about. I'm telling you folks clearly, and we just agreed to it right now, that it can increase the development of a cluster bill by allowing the modifications, but cannot allow it to exceed the zone of what that cluster is. I don't think that's a whole lot to ask. It really doesn't. With that being said, anybody else? Mr. Walker?
Mr. Tom, at one point when you were describing the forest con, I think, modifications, you sort of indicated that by granting a modification in that area, that it allowed you to mitigate the modification in another way. So am I to understand that when someone requests a modification, it's sort of like a bargaining kind of situation, where they're saying, hey, I want this, this item waived, but you have the ability to say, yes, we can waive that, but you've got to do A, B, C, X, Y, Z?
That's correct.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
And again, our closing statement is, we like Larry Tom, we don't know what the predecessor is going to be like. He might be, excuse me, successor. We don't know where it can go. And so what we're doing is, we're putting a little safety brake on this situation. I think it's a smart thing to do. So with that being said, okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2717.
Bill 2717, An ordinance concerning subdivision and development modifications.
All right. Any discussion? I think we've probably had enough of that tonight. All right, let's see, we have an amendment to Bill 2717. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes the prohibition against modifying recreation areas in certain cluster developments.
Okay, motion to adopt?
Second.
First it myself. Is there any discussion?
When you say motion to adopt, it sounds like you're making a motion to adopt.
Okay, well, that's good. I did it first, you popped the second.
It is your amendment, Mr. Chairman, right?
That's it. That's exactly right. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll in Amendment Number One.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay, Bill 2717, as amendment, will be heard on May 15, 2017. I want to also acknowledge that a vote on Bill 2517 will be heard also on May 15, 2017, too. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution Number 1617.
Resolution Number 1617, resolution supporting the county's application to the Maryland Department of Commerce to create an enterprise zone in Anarondo County.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick in the county executive's office, with me at the table, Allison Modine from Economic Development Corporation, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. As we discussed at the council work session, the Maryland Enterprise Zone Program is a state incentive program managed by the Department of Commerce that's intended to incentivize growth in economically distressed areas. Counties that are eligible to apply for the program must have census tracts that meet criteria related to unemployment, poverty, and population loss. Anarondo County did not have any qualified census tracts until recently. We have now applied for this designation. The qualified improvements by businesses located in the designated areas are eligible for real, real property tax credits, and state income tax credits in return for job creation and investment in these qualified areas. The counties determine the requirements to qualify for the property tax credits, and our requirements will be identical to our existing commercial revitalization tax credit. This enterprise zone tax credit, however, is a 10-year credit on a portion of real property expansion, renovation, or capital improvement. The amount of the credit is 80% of the eligible assessment in each of the first five years, and the credit decrease is 10% for the last five years. This resolution is required as a piece of the enterprise zone application to get the county council approval. We would ask for your favorable support, and Ms. Modine, or I will answer any questions we can.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 1617. Everybody wants to come in and say something, two minutes. Seeing no movement, and close the public hearing on 1617. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1617.
Resolution Number 1617, resolution supporting the county's application to the Maryland Department of Commerce to create an enterprise zone in Anarondo County.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1617.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 1617 is adopted.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution Number 1717.
Resolution Number 1717, resolution approving the appointment of Brian E. Riddle as a supervisor of the Anarondles Soil Conservation District.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick in the county executive's office. Resolution 1717, names Brian Riddle as soil conservation district. Many of you know Mr. Riddle. He is the president and chief executive officer of Home State Gardens in Davidsonville and Severna Park. He's been involved with numerous community activities and beautification projects in the city and Anarondo County. He's a member of the county agritourism work group, the boards of, and on the boards of Annapolis and Anarondo Convention Bureau, Anarondo County Chamber of Commerce, Rotary of South Anarondo County, and Davidsonville Area Community Association. We would ask for your support in this resolution.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Walker?
For the record, this, Mr. Riddle lives in my district, and obviously, soil conservation predominantly, in fact, impacts my district, and so I'm very supportive of his nomination to this board.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we're going to open up public hearing on 1717. If you want to come in and chime in, seeing no movement in the crowd, we're going to close public hearing on 1717. Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution 1717.
Resolution Number 1717, resolution approving the appointment of Brian E. Riddle as a supervisor of the Anarondles Soil Conservation District.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll in Resolution Number 1717.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 1717 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution Number 1817.
Resolution Number 1817, resolution urging the county executive and the office of planning and zoning to begin the comprehensive review of the 2009 general development plan during 2017, and to incorporate citizen participation into the review.
Okay, administration.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith, your bill.
Oh, Mr. Smith, sorry about that.
I put this resolution in as, one, to start the dialogue and make a statement with the council, at least, that we should, even though the process doesn't start for potentially another two years, I think it's advantageous for us to actually start this process when it comes to the general development plan much earlier. Part of that is because, as we've heard earlier today, when it comes to these sort of piecemeal approaches to the zoning, my intent is to actually do a comprehensive, or at least I want to be involved in a process that incorporates a comprehensive review of zoning, and all the various classifications, and what Anarondo County should look like, to include all the stakeholders who are involved in this process, from the civilian side of the house, developer side of the house, from the global access, global access, action at work, and in the environment. So everybody who would have a stake in Anarondo County and what it should look like, so that we can literally get a conversation going where, and collect data, and go over scenarios, and actually review the 300, or however many it was before, packages that were approved to see if there was a trend. Because right now, you know, if I say 300 or 500 vehicles went through the light, that doesn't mean that they all went through a red light, or they all went through a green light, it just means that 300 vehicles went through a light. And so what I'm trying to understand is, what was the light when those vehicles went through it? What was the, the assumption that was made, when, if we look at a few of those cases, to say, well, this has been the trend from all of them? So for me, I, I, over the last couple of months, and we certainly had this discussion like just a few weeks ago, and we had received no data from the previous pod conversation, and I feel like, I personally feel like we're just putting our hand in a pot of spaghetti and throwing it on the wall to see which noodle stick. I do not want to be in a process, be involved in a process where I'm just sort of guessing at what I think is the right, the right answer. I want to know with confidence that the right answer is, because X, Y, and Z. And so that's why I think it's important that we start this, this process earlier, and we get everybody to the table, and then we could really do the county justice by having a thorough review with the general development plan, instead of the, these sort of piecemeal approaches. So that's why I thought it was important for the council to make a statement on where they, what they believe when it comes to the general development plan, and I think they, what they believe when it comes to the general development plan, and I think this was at least a start, to start the conversation. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Thank you. For the staff, I'd like to be added to this resolution as a cosponsor. I agree with what you, what you've just expressed, Mr. Smith, I think there's, especially as we've dealt with a number of bills over the past six months, as it relates to, you know, sort of the future of the county and what it looks like. The one thing I would just add to, to that conversation is, and this is just an observation, having been through comprehensive rezoning, and I know four, four of us went through that process in our first term, and that is, I wouldn't delay the, the start of the conversation about the general development plan, but I would just suggest, from personal experience, that it might be helpful if the actual bill for the general development plan wasn't introduced until the next sitting council. And the only reason I suggest that is because that happened to us when we came in, the general development plan was passed by the previous council, and the comprehensive rezoning piece was left to this council, or the previous, this, this council, the four of us that were here, thank you, some of us. And so there was a little, it was a struggle, to be honest, because we didn't participate in that process. That's not to say, again, that this should be delayed. I think there is, you know, as we, as we look back at that general development plan, it was built through the small area plans, which were developed over a period of, a number of years, leading up to the introduction of the general development plan. So it's, I think that there is room for the discussion to start now, the small area plans to start being developed, if that's the direction the administration wants to take as far as how they come up with the general development plan. I would just suggest that, that the two, that the actual bill for the GDP be introduced to the same council that passes the comp zoning, just because I think there's, otherwise you have a disconnect. And there was, like I said, from my perspective, a little bit of a disconnect, because we didn't, we weren't involved in that process, didn't pass the bill, weren't in those conversations, and yet we were sort of, I won't say stuck, but we inherited legislation that had been passed previously that didn't necessarily, it was difficult, let's put it that way. So I think it'd just be beneficial, but I do support the concept, and I do think we're on the right track by starting the process and the question now. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
This is very, very strange, but I want to agree with Mr. Walker.
Again, this is the second time tonight.
Second time tonight? Second time tonight?
It is.
Never mind, I don't agree with Mr. Walker. No, no, seriously, though, it's, you know, I think the way we did comprehensive rezoning six years ago was, you know, falls, pretty much a disaster. It was the very first thing we did, we got in, the comprehensive rezoning shoved down our throat, we were still trying to learn where we sit up here on the dais, and we're making some of the most important decisions that we've made since we were being on the council. And I think if we would have had the GDP before us, it would have really given us an understanding of exactly every zoning classification, exactly the way we expect the county to look, or at least the way we think the county should look, and obviously give us a lot of input from the community through developing the GDP, and then going into comp rezoning. So let's show if that's the, the sponsors' thoughts are to have the GDP start on this council as far as the bill, and have this council pass that bill. And if that is, you know, I would certainly disagree with that strategy. However, if the intent is just to have the administration work on the GDP, so sometime in 2019, that GDP can be introduced, and then comprehensive rezoning can follow it, that's something I could support.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
So, I'm a little bit confused, because I certainly think we could do both of those, at least we could make the, I mean, I don't know if there's a way, we've got two years, this isn't, we're not going to the moon.
Mr. Chair.
We're not going to the moon, this is.
Comprehensive was a year.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
I would just say, Mr. Smith, respectfully, we sat through, through that process, and the way, it's up to the administration how they approach it, obviously, but in our case, they divided the county into three sections, we dealt with one section at a time. Each of those bills went the full maximum.
Ninety days.
Ninety days, that's possible, to debate all those, and you still.
Plus that other little thing that we do, that budget.
Yeah. It was tricky, because we did straddle the budget, actually, I think one of the bills might have been delayed, as I recall.
But that, but that's why I believe you guys already have the expertise, because you've handled it before, and when you get a new council who's never done it, they're going to take even more longer to actually complete that. Why not take advantage of the expertise that you've accumulated over the last six, seven years, to expedite it so that it's done effectively now, within the next 19 months?
Mr. Chairman. I'm not objecting to, I'm not objecting to that, I just, in my comments, I just, my main, my main point was to make the point that if you're going to do it, both should be done by the same council. Not saying that we couldn't do it, I do think it would be a challenge, especially having to have, you know, the, if you look back at the small area plans, and I don't know, Mr. Tom might could speak to this better than I can, or Mr. Swain, but I don't, not sure how long, over what period of time those were developed, but as I recall, it was a four- or five-year process, and those small area plans were developed by the individual communities. So you're, you've got the administration reaching out to, you know, South County, and the Edgewater area, and Pasadena, and the central part of the county, and, and so because, you know, staff from the county are interacting with those individual community groups, it takes time for those community groups to meet, understand what they're getting ready to do, work with the administration, then the administration comes back, okay, we got this area done, now we go to the next area, do the same thing, and repeat that process around the county, dividing it into the 13, 12, 14, I can't remember, it was 12 or 13, different areas that the small area plans encompass.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, thank you. And by the time you get all of that done, just that part, in order to come up with the general development plan, if you really want feedback from the citizens, that was, seemed to me to be a good way to start the process, and that process takes time. Not to say that the council couldn't pass a general development plan and go through comp zoning, we could, we had the time to do that, I just don't know that there's enough time to gather input from all of the community groups, feed that into one cohesive document, and then have that discussion at the council, and then pass the comp zoning, all within the next, less than 18 months, basically.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trump.
Thanks. Great points, Mr. Walker, and I would say that, you know, the expertise that you talked about, Mr. Smith, they've already had their turn. You know, they've taken their, their crack at it, and, you know, the next time this, this happens, it really needs to be about the next council, the next guys and girls, women that are, that are elected, and the GDP, you know, it's just the plan. It doesn't ensure the comp rezoning follows that plan by any means. So I would, I would think that it, you know, I do think that it makes most sense for the council that's going to make the ultimate decision through comp rezoning, should at least get the practice, if you will, of doing the plan. So when they go to make that vote on comp rezoning, they know what they're doing, they know what they're talking about, and they've been very involved with the community involvement of developing that GDP. It will be a game changer. When we sat up here and did that, I mean, I think that first bill was introduced in January, you know, we still didn't, we still walking around here to see where we sat, and we come up here and sit down, and we're talking about zoning, it was just, it was crazy, and I think, you know, part of me thinks that that was part of the strategy, you know, get these guys where they don't know, and they can, they can, you know, get what they want in, and it probably worked to some effect, and some effect, we probably did the exact opposite, as the lawsuit showed, and, you know, I feel strongly that the next council really needs to have their crack on both the GDP and comp rezoning. It makes the most sense, and I know we're eager to get it going, because we've seen the bills over the last six months, but I don't think it does any justice to comp rezoning, and I would flat-out disagree that this council can get both done in the next 18 months, just flat-out impossible. No chance, no way that's happening.
Mr. Smith.
I'm with you, because I never say you can't do something, okay? I'm with you.
This is why, this is why communities and people are frustrated with, I guess, government or bureaucracy, because it takes so long to do things that, at least in my mind, I'm not, this isn't against you guys, because what will happen is, the same effect that you just had right now, the new council that gets on board, that same person who'll be sitting here is going to go down, look at his name and come back up, or her name and come back up, and be behind the power curve. So then we won't be looking at this sort of comprehensive review passing, what is this, 2017 till 2021? And so, you know, because we, I mean, I think if we put our minds to it, we got, you know, easily 15 months, in my mind, I mean, if we could, this isn't ISIS, I mean, we're not battling ISIS, it's a static map, static communities, at least in my mind, I just, I just think that it could be done with the right amount of motivation, and the right amount of support from the administration, if they're eager to make sure we get this thing accomplished. That's, that's my own personal opinion. I still believe that we should start the process early, when it comes to getting these teams in place, so they can have that, that infrastructure built up, so that if we don't wind up making that decision with this body, that the next persons, they already have a support team that's already knowledgeable on it, and could backfill them quickly. I just think we, as the seven of us, could certainly, are smart enough to try to, you know, muscle through this, but.
I agree with that. I agree with the second point. Mr. Trump. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're, we're arguing a lot about what this resolution does or doesn't do, or mean, we haven't heard yet from the administration. It's non-binding, they could tell us, they're not going to listen to us. Before we argue about it anymore, let's hear what they have to say.
Okay, Mr. Marsick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick in the county executive's office, with me, Larry Tom from Planning and Zoning, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. The resolution really is unnecessary, we've already begun this process, and there are several steps to take, you know, the first is that we're now conducting, or will conduct soon, the Transportation Functional Master Plan, which has to be done before the general development plan, and Planning and Zoning is in the process of hiring a consultant, and selecting a consultant to do that. Secondly, we also have Mr. Tom's retirement coming up, and you're going to have a new Planning and Zoning Officer, and I'm not sure it would be fair to put the pressure on them to meet a deadline, but I think, you know, it's already begun, so it's not really necessary to have this resolution, because it's begun in 2017, so.
Well, just consider this our, our support behind you guys starting your process.
Maybe you could amend it to thank the county executive for beginning the process in 2017, instead of urging him to, that might be better phraseology for it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trump.
I'll wait, I'll wait for the boos to die down, but, so, two, two things. Number one, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it, and I'm wondering, maybe it would be helpful for the council, and in fact, the public, the community members, if you could outline the timeline as the administration sees it, in such a way where Transportation Master Plan undertake the next steps. I mean, I don't, people have asked me, are you, are they doing the small area plans yet, are they doing something else? I don't know. So I support the intent, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the resolution, because I do feel that we've had a couple of bills in the last six months or a year that have brought land use issues to the forefront. I believe that many members of the community want to know that there's a strategic process out there, and that it's underway. I hear what you're saying, but I think you could give some assurances to everybody, and in fact, you could respond to the resolution, if we pass it, by putting forth a timeline to give, to give a baseline.
I think, I think. I'll let Mr. Tom add on to the timeline, because he's much more experienced than I, but that presents the second problem, right, that I raised. You have Mr. Tom's replacement coming in, and a lot of discretion in this process is going to be based on who that Planning and Zoning Officer is. That person should be able to develop whatever plan that person wants to develop, to lay out this, right?
I completely understand that, I would just say, a counterposition would be, this would also be a good time to outline certain principles or visions that, with which the new person would come in and abide by, right? So I don't, I don't think necessarily that we want to give a new planning officer carte blanche to do whatever he or she wants to do, but at the same time, we do acknowledge that they will have some vision of their own, or some discretion. So outlining some key principles or baseline, along with a timeline, may be a handy thing to put forth in the job search process, just throwing that out there. But I do appreciate your concern, and I, I don't think we're that far away from all being generally on the same place, I think, and I'm trying not to speak for everybody, but I think there's a general interest in, in outlining the process because of the tumult of the last few bits of legislation. But I will just use my time with the mic to say that the point my colleagues have brought out about having one council do the GDP, and another council do the comp rezoning bill, I do think is problematic.
Mr. Walker, you have some say.
I would just add, too, Mr. Trump, or what he just said, to say that, you know, being as the, the new person coming in might not, I mean, we're assuming that this person has no experience. So they, they could have experience in this area, and have their own vision of how things should be or go. But I do think that, since Mr. Tom has been through this process, in his years here at the county, I think it would be beneficial, at least, to have some sort of roadmap to, to give that person, not to say that we're going to hold them to every timeline and nuance of what he suggests, but at least give us a framework of what we could expect, and what the public could expect as a process going forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'm going to just put this all together in a beautiful Christmas package with a little bow here. Councilman Smith just clearly said that he put this resolution in because he feels like it's grabbing a glob of spaghetti, and throwing it up against the wall to figure out what's right and what sticks to the wall, whatever have you. So far, I've done counted five people out of seven that have co-sponsored this resolution. My bill that was introduced will clearly say that we will put a moratorium on Anaronda County in any upzoning of residential property until the general development, general development plan is heard. So it won't be like Councilman Smith says, we're piecemealing things, and throwing spaghetti up against the wall to figure out what sticks. Five of you folks have supported what he's just done with that resolution, and I'm trusting that you'll support my piece of legislation that will call for no upzoning of residential property until the GDP is done.
That's not how they do it.
Hey, hey, look, five of yous co-sponsored. I just put the Pete Smith special to it. All right, with that being said. And even Councilman Fink supports that one, too. How about that? All right, with that being said, we turn around, and we are going to open up the public hearing on, what was it, help me out here.
1817, sir.
1817.
1817. So we're going to thank you folks, and you just kind of got them seats warmed up. We're going to have Mr. Boniface come on down, Mr. Ladd, it looks like Ms. Robin, is it Turk?
Yes.
Okay, and let's see, we keep going, do we fill the seats? We have Ann Feist, is it? Fickenstein.
Fleckston.
Fleckston, sorry about that. See, Ann, I know your name, but I just didn't catch the last name. All right, we have Anthony Brent, and I think that should do us for chair up here, we'll see what we got. One, two, three, four, we can do another one. All right, Laura Lutz, come on down. And you're going to take the mic, okay, and then we have Michelle Danoff, come on down, we've got one more seat.
Well, I'm very excited to be here today, and.
Me, too.
My name is Ann Fleckston, I live at 1337 Kenlock Circle, and I'm the executive director of Growth Action Network. But today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Alliance for Livable Communities. Now, some of you have heard of this new alliance, and what's different about it is, it's lots of local communities that are involved, but we have state partners who, I think, believe that Anaronda County is so important to the rest of the state, the assets that we have here really redound to the benefit of a lot of other counties, that we've got statewide partners who've come into the alliance, and this will be the first official recommendation that they have, and that is, we've got 18 members who've signed on, and I have enough for everybody, if you want to pass, pass it through, signed on in support of this resolution. And I think what you said, Mr. Smith, there are lots of ways to engage the public now, and the public is really eager. I think the Rural Conservation Line, some of these other bills have come up, and people have thought, gee, we need a comprehensive look. Well, we can start engaging the people, we can look at what was accomplished under the old plan, we can do research, get data, there's a whole lot of things that can be done that won't preempt a new director. In fact, if I were the new director, I would be happy to have all of that work done, not that it couldn't be redone or looked at, but we really hope that this can be a visionary process, an innovative process, that really takes the community together and says, what do we want in 20 years? What do we want in 10 years? And what are the assets we've got to protect? And where, where can we grow, and where shouldn't we grow? So I really hope that most of you will support this resolution, because I think we can begin now, and I don't know which, about the council and all those different things, but I think the more we engage the public, and the more we hear from the public, the better before the plan really gets going.[1703.04] Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll go, we'll go to the front page here. Mr. Boniface, name and address, please.
Jonathan Boniface, I'm 1637 Howard Chapel Court in Crofton, Maryland. I first started coming here in May of 2013, and I was pushing about probably seven people here, including Mr. Ladd and six of you all, for an update to the MGT study because things had changed. I mean, back in 2005, when that was developed, it got old, shorter than the 10 years it was supposed to cover. And so 2013, I started pushing for it, and this council passed money to fund that, and it pushed through and changed the priorities in this county. Now we're looking at these small area plans, and take, for instance, my neighborhood of Crofton. 16 years ago, that was published in January of 2001, and we're still operating on that. A lot has changed in Crofton since then. In February of 2002, the Edgewater and Mayo Small Area Plan came out. A lot has changed at Edgewater and the Mayo Peninsula since then. And they're planning now. The county executive's office is planning on different things in these areas, and based on the small area plan and the public input back then, I mean, we're talking 16 years ago, 15 years ago. South County, theirs was 16 years also. It was back in December of 2001. So I, I support this resolution. I think it's time to start getting started on at least the small area plans, get them set up for the next council, council that walks in. Have them, have that information there, and have the public get their say in there, and start working on it now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Councilman Ladd?
Yeah, Ladd, Chief Cat-Erder here. I strongly support passage of County Resolution 1817 urging early initiation of the General Development Plan process and the discussions of where and when we should develop. As I believe there are many, that there are many, that agree to the previous 16 Small Area Plan approach, uninformed by some sort of an alternative, some sort of a top-down approach, would yield a view of a lot more, no change, not in my backyard response, not many new ideas. This early start is warranted because the existing residential zoning areas, in my opinion, supporting the postulated 1% per year growth rate, will likely be consumed midway through the next 10-year GDP. Some sort of a massive shift in paradigm in our thinking is needed, in my opinion. With respect to an alternative view of the process, titles nine and 14 of the zoning article offer an example. These titles generally focus on designated locations, parole town center as a, as an example, and as opposed to categorical approach, which would be residential, commercial, industrial, maritime zonings. This overlay approach of these titles provide a more focused, albeit more flexible, way of guiding development with commodity involvement, and we've got some pretty good examples of those. Parole Town Center, Odenton Growth Management Area, historically BWY overlay, and the commercial revitalization areas. Note that the recent pill, 1017, that Pete spoke about, and you, John, did, was to work on redevelopment of commercial areas. I put all this together in this overlay approach, which could have five zones, not 13 or 16 different small area plans, northeast, southwest, and a central. Each has unique characteristics. Fundamental to these zones could be a major retailer employment center, and I can retail all that kind of stuff, and wouldn't surprise you, I've got a written statement, you can see how I would do it, but I think we're spot on. Need to get something started, top-down. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, and we have Ms. Robin Turk. Thanks for coming out.
My name is, my name is Robin Turk, 1537 Warfield Road, Edgewater. At his request, I'm presenting Jim Lyon's op-ed from the April 25th edition of The Capitol. Jim couldn't make it tonight. An update of the county's GDP is needed and should begin soon. Our experience on Mayo Peninsula illustrates why. Mayo's population already exceeds the year 2035 projection. In 20, in 2008, under pressure from MDE, the county agreed to a building moratorium until Mayo's sewer problems were resolved. Soon, the moratorium will be lifted. Mayo's drinking water comes from wells. Saltwater intrusion, arsenic contamination, and lack of water have required many citizens to drill deeper wells. The Health Department has recently decided that a one-year Aquifer Study is necessary. Traffic on 214 hinders EMS response times, enough that our fire chief has expressed concern. The county's proposal for park expansions will exacerbate traffic issues. The county has launched a traffic study that will also take one year. The rivers surrounding the Mayo Peninsula are impaired, according to the EPA. Things will only get worse as forests that filter runoff are replaced with impervious surfaces. Shouldn't all of these factors be a part of a comprehensive plan? How can the county lift the moratorium, having just initiated critical studies? Would it make more sense, before permitting more development, to complete these studies for informed decisions? Mayo's experience is not isolated. Other peninsulas and communities across the county are anxious to see a comprehensive, collaborative, and transparent update to the GDP that will be honored by our officials.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Anthony Brent, thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen, and Mr. Smith and Mr. Grasso, thank you for, for the, for the resolution.
Can you wake him up, John?
My name is Anthony Brent. I live at 607 Haven Hill Road on the Mayo Peninsula. I am the President of the Neighbors of the Mayo Peninsula, and I can say without reservation that we support Resolution 1817. Mayo urgently needs to update its Small Area Plan, which was last completed in 2002 and should have been renewed in 2012. This plan directly contributes to and considers all of the moving parts that contribute to our quality of life. In its sewage upgrade plan, the county projected that Mayo's population would reach 8,727 by the year 2035. We passed that number in 2016. That's 20 years ahead of schedule. We have existing problems with traffic congestion, emergency response times. On the peninsula, water quality in our creeks and rivers due in part to impervious surfaces and problems with our wells, to include failing wells, saltwater intrusion, and arsenic. Changes are currently being planned, which will make these problems exponentially worse for the residents of the Mayo Peninsula. This summer, the county expects to lift a building moratorium and open the door to at least 630 more units before any plan is in place to balance the impact of our schools, our creeks and rivers, traffic congestion, and public safety. At the same time, the county is working on plans to develop five parks on the Mayo Peninsula. The draft plans include 1,300 parking spaces, which gives us eight acres of impervious surfaces, and the potential for about 3,900 more cars per day on our roads. Yet so far, no traffic study hasn't included the impact of the parks. For private development projects, we are told that any project that doesn't generate more than 50 car trips a day isn't factored into studies and permits, and public projects do not need a study to be accomplished. On a peninsula, that leaves us wide open to death by a thousand paper cuts. Piecemeal planning or development now and try to solve the problem later is not acceptable. The Neighbors of the Mayo Peninsula support this resolution in order to ensure the county is listening to our voices and concerns as we move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brent. Appreciate that. Okay, we have Ms. Laura Lutz. Thanks for coming out.
Aye, thank you. Laura Lutz, it's 1652 Cliff Drive in Edgewater on the Mayo Peninsula. And I'd like to thank Mr. Smith for your initiative on this effort, and I'd like to add to Mr. Trumpauer's comments that I think the public would not only appreciate knowing that there's a strategic plan in place for moving the General Development Plan forward, but more than that, we would like to know what the plans are for having the public involved. I support this resolution. I've learned from my work with Mayo, with the Alliance for Livable Communities, and from conversations with people across the county, that citizens have enormous concerns about balancing development and quality of life. You can't solve these challenges quickly, and so far, we've received no clear answer from the county as to when the update will begin, how it might work, or how citizens will be involved, and we have made inquiries. Like especially to point out, aside from the specifics you've heard about Mayo, something I've been interested in for years, and that's the needs of peninsulas. Peninsulas are ground zero for reflecting how a community makes responsible land use decisions, or not. Their infrastructure is limited by geography, and they are by definition surrounded by sensitive shorelines. Cramming development onto a peninsula doesn't improve quality of life for anyone, and it does nothing to help the bay or the creeks and rivers where we swim and fish. The combined effects of land use choices, the cumulative impacts, are magnified on peninsulas, and it's time to give these areas special attention. 50, 80 years ago, maybe not, but population and development pressures have changed that. The rules that apply elsewhere may not make sense. Some of the questions I have, Anthony mentioned, a development project generating less than 50 road trips a day escapes part of the review process. Public projects like parks usually don't factor into traffic planning. I found out that land trusts are set up to conserve larger tracts of lands than are generally exist in one place on a peninsula, but our remaining forest fragments are critical to water quality, and we need a tool to protect them. And speaking of critical, there's one factoid I would leave you with from a recent report from the University of Maryland. Anarundel County routinely approves 89% of all requested exceptions to the state's Critical Area Law, which is supposed to protect sensitive shorelines like those on a peninsula. So yes, I'd like to see a robust update to the GDP, and I'd like to see it start now. Thank you.
Starting to see a pattern here, aren't we? Thank you so much. Okay, we have Ms. Michelle Danoff, is it?
It is.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michelle Danoff. I live at 1401 Pennington Court, that's on Mayo Peninsula. On April 1st, 2016, a 19-year-old Mayo resident was found dead in a ditch along 214 east of the Muddy Creek Road intersection. He was killed while walking home from work. Route 214 east of Muddy Creek Road has little to no shoulders, and anyone walking or biking is at great risk. April 26th, 2017, Capitol article by Phil Davis cites pedestrian deaths up 21% statewide and up 20% from 2015 in Anarundel County, making it fourth in the state. Maryland Transportation Secretary Pete Ron has called for the county executives and municipal leaders to come up with strategic highway plans to address this issue. There is a plan in the fiscal year 2017 for a sidewalk from the intersections of 214 and 2 to 214 and Mayo Road. This is to ensure the safety of the students walking in the South River Complex. A sensible plan with studies and community input. However, it falls short. We need this sidewalk to extend to Muddy Creek Road and beyond. If not a sidewalk, at the very least, we need the infrastructure of shoulders to ensure the safety of our residents. This is where the studies have failed and the community input ignored. Traffic studies for Route 214 on the Mayo Peninsula were done without taking into account the lifting of the moratorium, opening Beverly Triton Park, or any other proposals for park expansions. We have seen time and again tax dollars spent on studies and proposals without looking into the overall infrastructure inadequacies, small area plans, or the failures of the APFO. And this is not just a Mayo Peninsula problem. The 214 traffic study was done in December when the Lock Haven ballfields were inactive, parks were at low attendance, and the traffic counters were timed at the ends of communities. The communities pointed out these problems, and a new study has been called for. This is not about the waste, just the waste of our taxpayer dollars. It's about our neighbors' lives. Our neighbors' lives are at stake. We thank Councilman Smith and Grasso and those jumping on board for calling for the General Development Plan to get started now. We really would just like to see the, stop wasting our tax dollars on proposals that are not working, and you have to redo them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. Okay, appreciate you all folks coming down. Short one, Mr. Council, Mr. Councilman. We want to go home tonight.
Yeah, the one thing I'd like to.
I know, I got another person. You folks that have already spoken on down, while he's saying his two seconds over here. We have Mr. William Kraus, and anybody else that wants to come down and chime in, please feel free. Go ahead, Council, let's hear it real quick.
The one thing by starting it now, given you, after, you'll really hit the road after the budget. You're going to wind up making this issue part of the campaign for reelection for several of you, such that all of the people who will sit up here come next, you know, a year from now, when you start doing this thing, will have discussed this thing with their constituents. This, right now, before the election, guarantees that it will be out there and I think be a, be a campaign issue for anybody running for the county, and there is huge value in that, and I, I agree with Councilman Smith, maybe we could do it in 18 months, but starting it now puts it out there as part of the election discussion, and that in itself has enormous value as opposed to like some of us went through, coming out and having it put to us just to do the zoning. That was not the best way to do it, but this way, getting it started, having the conversation.
Works out good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Councilman. Okay, Mr. Kraus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Kraus.
Thanks for coming out.
1528 Warfield Road in Edgewater. With respect to the council, this resolution is not simply proposed by one council member. This resolution is being proposed by over 700 people on the Mayo Peninsula. The 350 that Mr. Smith saw, the 350 Mr. Walker saw in September, who are asking and quite frankly demanding that the county and the county executive fulfill their fundamental responsibility as a government to ensure the safety and welfare of the people they represent. What is currently being done through development and legislation in this county does not serve that responsibility. The piecemeal hacking and development of the county through modifications in environmental areas, through changes in zoning, through changes in road condition, through changes in parks, this piecemeal process of change it here, change it here, tweak, tweak, modify, switch, change is burying this county. It is poisoning the rivers. It is choking our population in traffic. It is preventing kids from growing up in the kind of world that many of you lived and enjoyed here. Because I can tell without even knowing you that all of you have more time in this county than I do, but every one of you should be as fiercely committed to preserving the life I moved here to have and am watching die as my child grows up. It is possible to develop and preserve. They are not mutually exclusive, and frankly, I'm tired of hearing the county executive and developers tell me that that's a fallacy and that because I'm a resident, I'm the enemy. The developer will leave, I'm staying. I came here because I care. But if the county executive is not committed to public involvement in this process come June of next year, we're going to get another one. Thank you.
I like, I like your message, Mr. Kraus. I'm with you all the way, baby. I'm with you. Okay, with that being said, and I stirred the pot up enough tonight. All right, let's see what we got. We're going to close the public hearing on 1817. Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution 1817.
Resolution number 1817, Resolution Urging the County Executive and the Office of Planning and Zoning to Begin the Comprehensive Review of the 2009 General Development Plan during 2017 and to Incorporate Citizen Participation Into the Review.
Any discussion among the council? I doubt that would be at this point. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1817.
Mr. Fink.
I'm going to support this resolution, but as I said earlier, it is not my intent to see the county executive send that bill down to this council. Aye.
Mr. Peruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
I'm with, with Mr. Smith on this, on everything. Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1817 is adopted.
All right, is there any other business to be brought before the county council?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. County Council is adjourned until 9:00 AM on May the 4th, 2017. Good night.
Thank you.